Chair Climan. Ready? Good evening. I will call the July 21st, 2022 Planning Commission meeting to order. Commissioner Klostermeier is joining us via Zoom this evening from a properly noticed location. Will everyone please stand and will Commissioner Harris please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Staff, roll call, please.
All Commissioners are present this evening. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Klostermeier is joining us via Zoom this evening.
Thank you. Public comments. This is the time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Request for continuances. Staff, do we have any requests for continuances this evening?
Chair Climan, there are no requests for continuances.
Thank you. Move on to consent items. Item number one, the minutes of our July 7th, 2022 meeting. Recommended action as approved and filed. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the minutes from our July 7th, 2022 meeting? Seeing none, we'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion with to add Mr. Mosher's edits.
A second.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
I will take a roll, a roll call vote now. Please respond when I call your name. Commissioner Wigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry? Vice Chair Elmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Klostermeier?
Abstain.
Secretary Rosine?
Yes.
Chair Climan?
Yes.
The motion carries 6-0 with Commissioner Klostermeier abstaining.
Thank you. Discussion items. Item number two is our Baja Sharkeys conditional use permit review. Staff, go ahead with your presentation.
Good evening, Chair Climan, Planning Commissioners. I'm Liz West-Morland with the Planning Division. This item is a one-year review of the Baja Sharkeys conditional use permit. The conditional use permit for Baja Sharkeys was approved by the Planning Commission back in June of 2020. There was a condition of approval included in the resolution that required a one-year review of the project, and that review was to occur one year off of, after operation. The project included construction, and so the one-year review would occur after that construction was complete. The condition included a focus on alcohol sales in the morning between 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m., and the reason for that focus was that this was really the only increased time where alcohol would be served with the business. Baja Sharkeys is located in McFadden Place, is located near many restaurants and bars and retail establishments, including Stag, Taco Bell Cantina, as well as other retail businesses. The conditional use permit that was approved in 2020 did many things. The prior use permit was from the 1980s and really reflected more of a nightclub-type use. In fact, the conditional use permit conditions did not match the ABC conditions, or the alcoholic beverage control conditions, on the alcohol license. And so this was really intended to not only modernize the permit, to align it with those conditions. It allowed the business to continue operating as a eating and drinking use. It reduced late-night hours of operations, so instead of operating until 2:00 a.m., they were required to cease operations at 1:30 a.m. As I mentioned, it increased morning hours of operation instead of opening at 11:00 a.m. to open at 9:00. It included an expansion into the adjacent space. There was a prior restaurant located adjacent to Baja Sharkeys that left the business and allowed for Baja Sharkeys to expand their dining area into that space. The project included many physical improvements as well, including the provision of a full sprinkler system, a retractable roof on a portion of the business, as well as other accessibility upgrades. The project included transferring or expanding the existing type 47 ABC license, and that's a on-sale general liquor license that allows for beer, wine, and spirits in conjunction with the restaurant, allow them to expand that into the adjacent space. It also removed an existing type 41 license, that's a beer and wine license, from that prior restaurant. It removed their ability to have live entertainment and dancing, and it ultimately modernized the conditional use permit conditions. This exhibit shows you the existing conditions of the space. So on the left-hand side, you have the original Baja Sharkeys, which has been in place since the 1990s, and then on the right-hand side, you can see 110 McFadden, which is the expanded dining room. It has really more of an open-air feel, and that's where the retractable roof is located. There's also an existing temporary outdoor dining patio on the parking lot. If you've been there in the last few years, you've seen a temporary dining area that fills the parking lot. This was originally approved, originally approved in 2020 under the city's emergency temporary use permit program during COVID, which allowed people to dine outside. And then when that program ended, and at the end of 2021, the applicant, like many other businesses in the city, applied for a limited-term permit to allow for a smaller or reduced area of dining to continue. They're able to keep this space in the parking lot until the end of 2022, and they have the opportunity to apply for an extension of one additional year. This isn't the topic of the use permit review, but I thought it was important to note. Ultimately, staff evaluated alcohol service in the morning from 9:00 to 11:00 and did not encounter any issues, code enforcement complaints, or police activity during this time. We included two conditions of approval in the resolution that we believe helped reduce nuisances related to alcohol service in the morning. For example, alcohol service between 9:00 and 11:00 is only allowed on weekends and certain holidays. It also has to occur in conjunction with the purchase of food. There's also a condition of approval, number six, which prohibits free refills or all-you-can-drink type deals on alcohol. That's really intended to prohibit things like bottomless mimosas. Although not the focus of the review, we did encounter a few issues or citations related to the business, and so we've disclosed them here. First, the doors and windows are required to close at 9:00 p.m. That's really to prevent noise transmission after 9:00 p.m. There's been two violations on record in July and October of 2021. However, when we met with the operator and their management, we were able to explain the conditions, and there's been no issues since that time. They also received a noise complaint in October of 2021, but on following visits, there were no issues related to noise. Lastly, a citation was issued for DJ activity, which we considered to be live entertainment and dancing back in January of this year, however, there's been no issues since that citation. Ultimately, there's been no complaints for the last six months. In conclusion, staff has generally observed compliance with the conditional use permit conditions as viewed through a lack of complaints. Any issues have been quickly resolved after violations were issued, and specifically, the focus of this use permit review, we've not found any alcohol issues in the morning from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. With that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission accept and file the one-year review, and we do not recommend any further reviews at this time. However, code enforcement will continue to conduct their standard monitoring. I'm available for any questions. We also have civilian investigator, Police Wendy Jo here as well, if you have any questions regarding police statistics. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. So this is not a public hearing, but I will go ahead and take comments from Planning Commissioners if there are any questions.
Just on page seven of the staff report, there was a comment that in July 2022, there will be a police chief approval for the operator's license. Seeing that we're nearly done with July, is that on schedule, or has that still been the works?
That has been approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commission? Okay, we'll go ahead and take public comments at this time. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none. We will go ahead and move on to our next item. Thank you. Public hearing items. Item number three, our Lido House Hotel expansion at 3300 Newport Boulevard. Staff?
Chair Climan, give us a moment here while we switch the presentation. Principal Planner, Benjamin Zadiva, will be here to provide that presentation, and you may have noticed I used a different title for Ben. He was recently promoted from senior planner to principal planner, so I thought I'd add that.
Well deserved. Congratulations.
We're almost there here for the Lido House presentation. All right.
Good evening, Chair Climan. Commissioners, Ben Zadiva with the Planning Division. I'll provide you a brief presentation that goes over the merits of the application. I'll let you know that Bob Olson, the hotel developer, is here to present with some of his design team members. He'll go into some of the more aesthetic details and can answer questions at your pleasure. So most of us know where the Lido House Hotel is, but just in terms of orienting the public, we've got Hoak Hospital to the north, coming down the 55 onto the peninsula. It'll be on your left, and then off to the east, you've got Lido Isle. From a land use standpoint, you've got commercial visitors serving Lido Village, a very specific designation for this parcel. You've got residential off to the east, mixed use to the south, a commercial corridor component off to the west with residential beyond. Notably, you'll see in blue font, 103,470 square feet of hotel with an 85 in parentheses, and that talks to the anomaly 85, which limits the development on this parcel to that square footage you see there. In terms of background, you'll see that this was originally approved by City Council in September of 2014. You'll notice that they executed a long-term ground lease, so Mr. Olson and his development company do not own the property. They are in an agreement with the city as the lessor on the property for 55 years at this time. Notably, in April 2016, they came back to the city while it was under construction, approved, or sorry, requested additional square footage, and also requested to increase the development limit slightly at the time to 103,470 square feet. They found some areas that would enhance their programming, and those were approved, authorized by Coastal Commission. Fast forward to April 2018, Lido House Hotel opened. In terms of the existing Lido House Hotel site, you'll see the entire parcel highlighted there in red. However, notably, it does not include the former fire station two, number two site, which, as you may know, has since relocated further down the peninsula, and that building has been transitioning away, or operation has been transitioning away from that building, rather, and it is close to being vacant, if not vacant already. As part of the applicant's request, which is what we're going to dive into now, you'll see that I've separated the additions that are requested by level, although the addition number one there, which is for the five cottages, I will note is slightly misleading because those are three-story structures, but the intent was to show you that most of the additions are occurring on the ground level, limiting the amount of bulk that you'll see from the street. In total, you'll see the top right shows the existing square footage, plus they're asking for 15,103 square feet, which is commensurate with the development limit increase, for a total development limit of 118,573 square feet. So again, this table talks to the different additions. Notably, the bulk of it is for five additional cottages, which we'll see soon in the presentation mirror the existing five cottages that are there today. They also proposing storage space to help enhance the hotel staff operation and make it more efficient, and some walkways are being enclosed to weatherproof while providing pre-function space for the existing users of the ballroom. I would also note that there is a 600-square-foot greenhouse that's being proposed at the Newport Boulevard frontage. I do have a nice materials board here with me from the architect, if you'd like to see that. The suite conversions, that talks to three existing hotel rooms that are going to be converted to king suites with a minimal 273-square-foot addition. And then there's also an existing lighthouse feature that, as I understand it, from Deputy Director Jim Campbell, who originally worked on the project, was intended to be enclosed, but there was no square footage to do so when it was first constructed, so they're now coming back to try to enclose that lighthouse feature, which you'll see later in the presentation. In terms of things that are not square footage related, they're looking to demolish the former fire station number two building and will replace it with 28 private valet parking spaces. And notably, the city will get 14 public parking spaces, which is something that has been previously discussed with City Council. They are also looking to realign the 32nd Street driveway and reconfigure the onsite parking due to the expansion of the cottages. The five cottages do shift the alignment of the driveway as well as the drive aisles, but that has all been reviewed by city's public works and traffic engineer and have been acceptable, accepted, rather. I'll also note that they're proposing to install new barrier fencing and gates along 32nd Street and Newport Boulevard frontages, which I'm going to actually show you after this slide. So here's one of my favorite renderings, and it's because it shows almost everything that happens with the project. So there's the new parking. You've got 14 public spaces accessed off of Vio Porto. Notably, in the conditions, the applicant is required to furnish and install the pay stations for those parking spaces eventually. You do have the new parking, which will serve the Lido House Hotel. Those are valet stacked spaces, 28 of them. There are the five cottages. Again, it's a complete mirror of what you've got there today, so the architecture will be matched in kind. There's the greenhouse peeking up over the main building there where the coffee corner is, and you'll notice that it retains the two landmark ficus trees. It goes right in between on top of the existing patio. In red, you'll see the walkout enclosure, or sorry, walkway enclosures, which are again weatherproofing hallways, and then added breakout room. That's about 1,000 square feet at the front. There's the rooftop enclosure, which again, it's not going to add bulk, it's just adding windows and enclosing that feature. And the last thing I'm going to note is, and sorry, it's a little crude, but there's a purple outline on the fencing that's proposed. There are two separate fenced areas. 32nd Street is slightly taller on the plans. I think it's proposed at about five feet. There is landscaping involved in front of it, and I have a better rendering of that. It does have vehicle access gates, as well as pedestrian access gates, closer to the functional areas. You'll see at the top portion along Newport Boulevard, there's also a fence proposed. There's a condition of approval related to gates at that location, because it is intended to be a public corridor. The gates would be removable and are conditioned to be removed when there's no events, so effectively, it's just a barrier along Newport Boulevard that's completely accessible to the public. The plans call out 42 inches, so it is low-lying. There's a view of the fence from 32nd Street, so you can see it's got landscaping, almost like a hedge-like feature with wrought iron, so it's fairly unintrusive. It does blend in and shell, and really, it screens some of the vehicles that are parked in that area. As far as required city entitlements, we do require amendments to the general plan local coastal program and zoning code to increase the development limit to 118,573 square feet. You'll notice that staff also put forth some language wordsmithing amendments to remove references to the fire station, which are no longer going to be relevant. Staff analyzed these requests. It is a minor increase in square footage. It will help enhance the hotel operation. The predicted traffic is still less than the original City Hall traffic that used to be there, and it's consistent with the general plan and local coastal program goals and policies, as well as the remaining development standards with exception of the development limit, which they're requesting to change. Real quickly, with any general plan amendment adding intensity, staff has to conduct a section 423 analysis from the city charter, and you'll see here that even with this amendment, there would be 2,121 square feet remaining, and thus, there's no vote required because it is not surpassing the 40,000-square-foot threshold. We'll continue on with city entitlements. We have to process a site development review, which looks at the efficiency of the layout, the architecture, making sure it complies with the Lido Village Design Guidelines. So you'll see here, I've put some notes that it maintains the Lido House Hotel architectural style, which notably has been replicated in other areas of the city and has been coined Lido House Hotel Architectural Style. It does retain the two landmark ficus trees, and the large setback area remains to the larger structures. It complies with all required setbacks. From a use permit standpoint, there are no real operational changes to the restaurant areas or any of the food services. It's really just related to hotel operations and related functions. And notably, there would still be a requirement for special event permits when the hotel does host special events. The application was reviewed by all pertinent city departments, and issues that they had were conditioned or sorted out, and there's also adequate parking provided for the increase, and I'm going to dive into that further here. But from a parking standpoint, when Lido House Hotel was originally created, as I understand it, hotels are driven, parking requirements for hotels, rather, are driven by use permit, and since the hotel was not in operation, they used similar operations to drive the parking demand. Now that the hotel has been in operation, Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan, traffic engineers, conducted a parking demand analysis based on what actually happens in the field, and they found a peak demand of 151 parking spaces. So notably, the project provides the equivalent of 165 parking spaces, a surplus of 15. That analysis was reviewed and accepted by the city traffic engineer. And just showing where those parking components are. So the bike racks are located in purple off to the west. You've got the 11 stacked valet spaces, the 14 public spaces, which are not counted towards the hotel's parking, mind you. That is, public parking, first come, first served, it would be metered, and then the 28 valet spaces that are stacked. Lastly, I'll note that it did require, it does require coastal commission oversight, notably with the LCP amendments, and also with the coastal development permit that was approved by the coastal commission, the applicant would have to pursue an amendment to get the development implemented. With respect to CEQA review, there had been a previous addendum prepared for the project, so this is addendum number two that is being considered to the certified final EIR that was originally approved for the project. That is all, the analysis for the addendum is all detailed in section two for CEQA under, or under section two of your resolution under the CEQA header, and the conclusion was that the project will not result in any new or more severe significant impacts than were originally anticipated with the original project. As far as recommended action, next steps, staff's recommend you conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolution. That would be recommending council approval, so staff's plan would be to take it to city council on September 13th. You'll notice here that they will be also reviewing a lease agreement amendment for the expanded area, because again, the current site does not include the former fire station number two building, and it will need to be expanded to include that additional area. In late 2022, staff's anticipating the LCP amendments will be submitted to coastal commission for review, while the applicant also pursues the coastal development permit amendment. That concludes my presentation. As I said, Mr. Olson is here to make a presentation as well, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Planners, Zadiva. Okay, are there any questions from Commissioners for staff?
I have one kind of innocuous question. On handwritten page five, where it has the outline of the, of the project, there's an extension past the lease line that includes a portion of 32nd Street that's parking. I was just wondering why that was aligned, the alignment was laid out that way.
As best I know, that is the historic alignment, and that's the legal parcel that you see there. So for instance, when staff goes in and identifies that parcel in our geographic information system, that's the exact line it brings up, so that it matches the legal record.
Commissioner Wigan?
I just had a couple of questions. There was a constituent or a neighbor letter that had talked about trash enclosures. Maybe, should we wait till the applicant maybe can just address that? Or should, should we talk about that now? Or just curious about the new parking area. There was a neighbor that had written about trash enclosures that would be next to, or potentially could be there. Do you have anything on that?
I'm happy to dive into that now. It's at the chair's pleasure.
Yeah, you can go ahead and address it. I'm sure we'll hear from the applicant on it as well.
Sure. So I actually have a slide prepared for you showing the existing trash enclosure at the northeastern component. That is not moving. That is existing to remain. You'll see that there's no trash enclosure proposed at the easterly side where the parking is located. The additional trash enclosure you see off to the west is relocated. There's currently a trash enclosure there today, but it's being relocated to be integrated into that break room building. That's a new component to screen it. So there's currently no trash enclosure proposed closer to the resident who was concerned about that component.
Great. I have to wear my Commissioner Ketting hat, so I continue that on. Parking on 32nd Street, there was a change to where the entrance is or exit is with the retractable gates or the, the moving arms. That's moved a little further to the right there, but the parking that's on 32nd to the left, that's street, city parking, that doesn't change, right? There's no difference in numbers to that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, cool. And then when you discussed on the barrier fence that you wrote on, on handwritten, handwritten eight, number 10, the installation of the barrier fence along 32nd and Newport Boulevard frontages, you had mentioned that they were removable. Do we have a good, like, view of that? Or maybe the applicant, when, when he comes up, do they have a good view of what these fencing will look like from Newport Boulevard? And, and are there gates there, like there are similarly on 32nd Street?
Just to the point of clarification, the fences themselves would not be removable, but the gates would be removed, allowing passage through. And I'd let the applicant elaborate on any of, anything they can.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I know that there's some gates on the other side on 32nd that keep people from getting in and out of the pool, which is great, but maybe we could talk about if they need to be removable, or if they can be just maybe timed so that, you know, I'm, I'm sure they'd like to have some more secure premises after hours. Maybe they could, we could talk about the reasonings behind removable versus, you know, permanent, but they can't be locked until a certain point, so that maybe they can have a little bit more security, because it is a busy street, and there's a lot of foot traffic that go on that street. You know, after hours, people don't need to be lingering around in that common area. Maybe that's, and I don't know, is that something that coastal would prevent them from doing, or is that something that they have the right to, to have instead of removable?
We can't comment on how coastal would react to that proposal. They would likely be concerned, however, about coastal access and maximizing public access in the coastal zone.
But like I say, after hours, like, you know, beaches are technically closed at 11 to 6. Could that be something they couldn't have by gates that could lock on their end between those hours, too?
It is something that could be put forth, but I don't know that it would stick when it gets to coastal commission.
Yeah, okay. Well, maybe the applicant would be interested in at least us pursuing that option, because I do know that there is a lot of foot traffic there that I don't think anyone would want on their private property, so it could be something for them. That's all I had.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff from the Commission? Commissioner?
Chair Climan, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm curious, with the new greenhouse room, it looks like it's sitting in public open space adjacent to Newport Boulevard, if this is going to reduce the amount of public open space, or if this greenhouse would be open to the public?
Commissioner Klostermeier, I'll let the applicant comment on that for clarification.
Okay, and then I have the same question about the breakout room as well.
Noted.
That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Klostermeier. I have a couple of questions of my own. Ben, if you would just walk us through super fun math calculations on your page 11 of your presentation, the green light, just, you kind of skimmed over it.
Sure, yeah, no problem. So you'll see that the Sure, yeah, no problem. So you'll see that the city tracks prior amendments for a period of 10 years. So each of the amendments to the general plan that you see off to the left are listed out. And again, those have occurred within the last 10 years, and you'll see the related increases from those amendments off to the right. So for instance, 2012 005, the increased density for that project was seven units. So you'll see seven units reflected in the table. There's nothing else reflected there. And then keep going down, you'll see increased intensities. 2016 001 is actually the prior amendment for Lido House Hotels, so there's the 4,745 square feet. And then you get a total prior increase number, 28,470, and seven increased units. So everything tracks separately. Per the guidelines for implementation of Charter Section 423, we take 80% of those prior increases, and that's what is kept on the books. And there you'll see 5.6 and 22,776. You take 100% of the proposed amendment, which is 15,103, plus the 80% increases previously, and that gives you the total. If that does not surpass the thresholds of 100 square, sorry, 100 dwelling units, 40,000 square feet, or 100 AM or PM peak hour trips, then there is no vote required. And one thing to clarify, since the general plan anomaly does not talk about rooms, there's no peak hour trips analyzed for this project. It's purely related to the amendment at hand.
Great, thank you. And then can you also just put up the land plan again and outline all of the areas that are being proposed to have cover the new units and also on the rooftop?
Yeah, let me see if I can use my mouse here. So if you can see my cursor. So these are the five cottage units that are proposed. And again, it's a mirror image of the existing five cottage units. You've got some additional storage areas that are noted here on the back end, so you won't really see them from the street. Same thing here, storage. These areas here are include, sorry, enclosed breezeways. They will be weatherproof and enclosed as walkways or hallways as part of the project. You've also got storage here. This is the greenhouse structure, 600 square feet. And then this is the 1,000 square foot breakout room at the front. So these are really the main areas of additions on the ground level. I do not have floor plans for the remainder, but I believe the rooms are somewhere in here, and it's an infill of a dead space, such that there's really no change to the outside.
Okay, great. Are there any other projects you're familiar with that have this kind of a greenhouse space? Unique?
None in the city that I'm familiar with. I know that, actually have, sorry, I have something here. So the applicant provided character imagery, and I don't know if they can talk to where this is located, but this is the look and feel that they're after. And again, I do have a materials board if you'd like me to pass that around for the commission to review.
Okay, we'll let the applicant address all of that. I think those are all of my questions. At this time, we'll take ex parte communications. We'll start with Commissioner Wiegand.
None.
None?
None.
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 Commissioner Klostermeier?
None.
Thank you. And we'll open the public hearing and have the applicant come up and give presentation.
Okay. Okay, great, right there. Thank you, commissioners, for hearing our proposal. We're, we are now four years into opening of Lido House, and we've been through quite a journey here. So with COVID and, but things are doing well at the property. And so we have these, these, you know, few changes we'd like to make, a lot of things that we've learned over the years. And so I'll just walk through a little bit of what, Greg, can you come up? Greg Viegas is our architect with WATG. He was actually, has been with us from day one on this property. So this is the aerial that you've seen before. So the idea was, we, we have, this is two years in planning. So we've looked at these cottages, where to put them, either out on this, at the fire station, a number of places. The demand for the cottages have been very positive. We get a lot of families that stay there. And one of the reasons for the fence is for a sense of security, especially for small kids, so they don't walk out onto the street. And I can talk more about the gates. The idea is that it would be locked to the general public, but open by key, key card access. We have that access now at the small, I don't have a, but at the small podium that you see, right there, there's a gate key access there, as well as right by the end of the cottages. So it's been requested by a number of our guests staying in the cottages for security and for safety for kids. This is 32nd Street. You get a glimpse of the greenhouse, 600 square feet. And then to the right, the meeting space, breakout meeting space. This is, you can see a better glimpse of our proposed fence. We have one now on both sides of the, of the, that, the structure, their awning structure. And the idea is keeping the architecture consistent. We always felt like this was a way better answer to just the typical back of a hotel, and it's really worked out well. You see the public parking that was pointed out earlier. The greenhouse, so the greenhouse idea actually comes from Tavern on the Green in New York, if you've been to Central Park. And we actually permitted and put an awning structure just off of Mayor's Table, and it's all retractable walls and roof, and, and it's been received very well for small gatherings. But it would not, it would be open to the public for public use with, you know, use with the hotel. We are within the open space setback.
The enhanced setback.
Enhanced setback. So we're not in the, what are we, what sort of?
I think, I think what we're saying is that there was an originally approved setback, and we've added about 30 feet to it. So we're proposing an enhanced setback, and this sits even further in from that, about 53 feet.
So here we, that's it. Thank you. Any questions or?
Let me just first ask you, are you in agreement with the conditions as proposed?
We are.
Great. Are there any questions from the commission? Commissioner Wiegand?
On, on the fencing on Newport Boulevard, do you have anything that, that shows what that's going to look like?
Well, there is no.
It's hard to actually see in, sorry, it's hard to see in this actual image. However, if you look at the plans on the, on the site plan, you can see the fencing and the gates proposed.
Would you introduce yourself?
Sorry, I'm Greg Viegas with WATG Architects.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if you look at the page AE-2, and you look over to the lower left, you are going to see, I'll get my glasses on here.
That purple kind of squiggly line?
Yes, you see a kind of a, yeah, the blue line represents the gates, and that purple line sort of represents the enclosure. And so each one is identified. There's a gate here on the corner of 32nd Street, Newport Boulevard. If you go north up the sidewalk, there's another gate that you can see up by Mayor's Table. And then if you come back down to the coffee house, there's one along that sidewalk, right adjacent to the coffee house, and then a larger gate to allow just some vehicle access should there be necessary there at the lower right. And the intent is that those gates would only be really closed and used when there's a special event happening in that space.
I, I'm satisfied with, with, with it. I just didn't know if you thought maybe to have them actually permanently gated and then unlocked at, at certain hours?
Yeah, we, for, for the Newport Boulevard side, we encourage the traffic, you know, pedestrian traffic, even bikes come through there now. So just as, as Mr. Viegas alluded to, for special events. So when we're having an event, we're not putting temporary fences up and.
Yeah. You know, I, I'm fine with everything. I just wanted to make sure you wanted, maybe that's to additionally add that for purposes of, of evening or late night.
As you suggest, on the back gates by the cottages, it's, that's.
That's permanent.
Yes.
That's locked out by the pool, too, so that provides a safety measure, but.
During COVID, we had some issues with, you know, people, you know, overstaying their welcome, if you will, on the public access side, but, you know, and leaving quite a mess. And, but since COVID's, you know, been over, we really haven't had much issue there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Secretary?
So just to clarify, those gates will be open. And if you, so you could go in, grab a coffee, go outside, sit at those tables. Because people obviously use it. It was out there in the middle of the week, and they were, the seats were full. So.
And we have Wi-Fi out there, and it's actually open to the public. We don't even, you know, people come with their dogs, neighbors.
I sense that.
Yeah, yeah. And so we're not checking, hey, did you buy coffee? So it's, it's, it's kind of just a, Ben, you know, we're, we welcome everyone, but we do want to be able to have an event. And, and even in an event, we'll make sure that our, we have room for our guests.
I did want to ask, because I've never been to New York, but my first impression of the outdoor greenhouse, it just felt a little bit odd to me. So I don't know if maybe you could speak to this and identify what, how it would be used.
Yeah, okay. No, that's, actually, it's a great question, because I didn't really talk about it much. So the idea is that we would use it for small groups, much like we're using the, we built a similar structure, only it's not as beautiful as this, but for small groups, small dinners, anything from wedding shower to baby shower. But, and, and really for, again, for small meetings, and we can service it from Mayor's Table. But if you, so the hotel was actually modeled after my home on Babo Island, and I have that same greenhouse structure smaller at my house. So it's really, if you look at some of the interior photos, they're from, from my house on Babo Island.
Yeah, I mean, the images that you provided have a very strong feel to them. But the images of the, the building from the outside, and maybe it's just because of the way that the images were, were set up, it felt temporary. And I don't know if it's the color.
Yeah, probably looks, because it's, it's not, you know, perfect, but if you come see the, what we did on Babo Island and come inside, you get a real, it's, you know, it's, it's.
I just needed some help understanding what, how it was going to feel, because it felt alone in that space.
On one hand, too, that's why we added the fireplace as well. So there's a brick fire, or wood, sorry, a stone face fireplace that matched the one in the pool area. And essentially, what you have is a little jewel box. It's a unique condition on the site. It literally sits on the existing deck, so you're going to see the existing deck. And the idea is just to really fit in that open jewel box in, in the middle of those two trees. It, it actually, the converse to that would be to create a solid, you know, structure, which actually looks more like a shed, because we've done a lot of studies on it, and it, it almost looks like a little tool shed in the middle. So I think this was the best approach to create that flavor for the, for the hotel.
Will the material actually be that white?
At this, at this juncture, we've selected a white. There are different shades of white. We can always, it can be toned down. We have a, a material board. We tried to pick a warm white. We certainly don't want a cold white, but it can be toned.
Oh, that one doesn't, Bob. Sorry, it was on the slide. Is there?
This material here?
It's wood.
Oh, it's wood?
Yes.
Okay.
We have it on the slide, Bob, sorry.
Yeah, the images within the, the document are, it conveyed something different to me than what I saw. So that was my question. I mean.
Oh, I think Ben had it. Ben, you know the slide that you had? Thank you. It's, it's the second one up from right there.
Yeah, right, to the right.
To the right, yeah. There it is.
Yeah, right there. Beautiful. I mean, I, and there's a, Alum has a olive tree outside, so this sits under the ficus trees. It's really a beautiful setup. Ficus, ficus trees.
I trust your judgment. It was something that seemed, I needed help understanding. And I, I think that everything else that you've provided here are very beneficial. My one question about the relocated trash can next to the new breakout room. The existing trash can is trellis covered, and the, one of the conditions stated that it had to be covered by a roof. Is a trellis considered a roof? And are you planning on putting a roof on that or a trellis?
Actually, the answer to the, at least the initial review when we did the original hotel, the answer to your question is yes, the trellis was considered a roof. And what we're doing is we're taking the exact same design, and we're just rotating it 90 degrees, and it sits up against the building. So we are proposing essentially the same trash enclosure rotated 90 degrees.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Go ahead. Commissioner Harris?
I noticed a couple parking spots were lost, but it's valet-only control, I understand. Has it ever been an issue on a big, you know, summer weekend or with a wedding or anything? Or do you have a, you know, overflow plan or anything, or has it ever been necessary?
So we, I mean, our valet team is pretty creative, and they're putting cars everywhere. We're not parking on the street. In fact, some of the concerns that we had when we had the hotel approved was concerns from Finley Track and other areas, but we have zero complaints. They're our best customers in the lounge and, in Mayor's Table. We would hear certainly from our neighbors.
Secretary Rosin?
Sorry. Is it, getting back to the parking, there was something that I thought was kind of interesting, and I saw your parking team out there doing quite, quite a good job on valeting. But one of the interesting things is that there are parking spaces on the site plan that are identified as 13. This is in front of the existing cottages. Those parking spaces, I assumed were not controlled by valet?
No, they are.
They are. So everything, including the stacked ones that are effectively blocking the, those, those 13?
It's 100% valet.
It's 100% valet. Okay, that, that makes.
We originally wanted our cottage people to be able to drive their car up to the house, to their cottage, but it's just, it's too, too much, too many moving parts, moving cars in this situation.
It makes more sense that that would be valet parking, so I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Commissioner Klostermeier, do you want to repeat your additions?
Yeah, one, one clarification question. I didn't quite follow your response on the greenhouse room as to if that was reducing the footprint of the open space. I, I, I think it is not, but could you just reconfirm that?
Yeah, we, we would say it is not. The, the greenhouse can completely be opened on three sides, and it's essentially sitting on the existing Ipe Wood Deck and not really taking away the function of the floor space.
Okay. And then on the breakout rooms, where those are going to be constructed off to the side, is that on any current public open space?
No.
Thank you.
I just had one other question, Bob. I'm curious how the glass.
I said one other question, Bob. I'm curious how the glass has fared in the harsh coastal conditions. That's something that they don't have in downtown New York.
Sorry, say again the.
The the glass, how does it fare on the property? You said you have one, and the pictures here are from there. I'm just curious.
Glass in the greenhouse or the?
Yeah, because it's.
Yeah, it's definitely a maintenance item.
Yeah.
It's got to be cleaned. So it's kind of part of the but you can imagine, as long as we don't let it go, we'll probably we'll be cleaning them probably once a week. And so my house is once a month, but it just takes one bird to ruin a really good day.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this item?
Chair Kleiman, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I personally didn't find the fencing a very attractive addition to this property. But what I wanted to speak about was the green light analysis, which in the agenda packet is on handwritten page nine. It was on a slide that we saw before. As Ben pointed out, we have a charter provision, as you well know, that allows the city council to add general plan through general plan amendments to increase the development limit within a statistical area over 10 years by 40,000 square feet. Beyond that requires voter approval. The table makes it appear that the applicant is generally generously leaving 2,121 square feet of wiggle room that the council would have available to authorize some other property in this statistical area to increase the allowable square footage for more development on their property. The conclusion is probably legally correct. But I wanted to point out that there is some question about how those figures in the table were arrived at. Because over the last eight years, we have added through general plan amendments, this hotel complex, which you'll see on the first page, is 118,573 square feet with these amendments. And yet somehow that never triggered a need for a vote. So if you could look at that table, which is on page handwritten nine, or if we could see the slide, the second line you'll see in that is the First Amendment that had to do with this hotel. It says, General Plan Amendment 2012. It actually was eight years ago in 2014. It looks like they're not taking much of the 40,000, 23,725 square feet in 2014. That actually used up all of the 40,000 that was available at that time, because there had been earlier amendments. However, even that is questionable, because that what was added in 2014 was the 98,000 square foot hotel. And the 23,000 number was listed as the excess of that hotel over the City Hall that potentially could have been at that location. But voters never approved 75,000 square feet for that former City Hall. And in fact, in 2008, they had moved the City Hall from that location to here, and no correction had ever been made to the entitlements at that location. So that first number is a little suspect. And then the second number, 4,745 arises only because when they got that entitlement for the entire 40,000 square feet, only 80% of that is counted towards the future. So they were gobbling up every little bit that was left. An amount of time, but I don't think it was ever intended that the same applicant who got a general plan amendment could use the 20% excess for their same project. So both of those previous numbers are a little bit suspect, as is the conclusion that there never should have been a vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Are there any other comments from the public?
Hello. Thank you, Honorable Commissioners. My name is Bridgette McConaughey, and I'm behalf of, you know, I hear, Local 11. It's a hospitality workers' union representing a 30,000 stadium, airport concessions, and hotel workers in Southern California and Arizona, which includes the workers at the Balboa Bay Club here in Newport Beach. We have some questions about this project. Now, affordable access to the coast and affordable housing are very important to our members, who often can't actually afford to live near where they work nor stay the night, stay overnight in the same area. So our first question, does this project provide any affordable overnight visitor accommodations? And if not, has feasibility analysis been conducted as required by the municipal code section 21.48.025c? Or are there plans to conduct one? And additionally, will there be an impact in analysis? And will appropriate mitigation be provided? And our second question, is it the former fire station property covered under the Surplus Land Act? The California Housing and Community Development Department of the Surplus Land Act guideline states that land, quote, must be declared either surplus land or exempt surplus land as supported by written findings before a local agency, and they may take action to dispose of it consistent with an agency's policies or procedure, end quote. Will the city declare this property surplus or exempt surplus land before it is leased to the developer? Now, as you know, the policy goal of the Surplus and Act is to offer public affordable land and for affordable housing and or public open space, goals which our union, Local 11, agrees with. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
My name is Bob Fallon. I live across the street from the fire department on Oporto. The new fire department building, best building in Orange County. The old fire department buildings can become five beautiful triplexes. Additional parking on Oporto, which fills up every Saturday and Sunday. I don't know anything technical about square footage, but this is a huge win for me and for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Staff, is there anything you want to comment or respond to?
Sure. Chair Kleiman, I'm going to take a crack at kind of at least responding to Mr. Mosher's questions about the Charter 423 analysis. First of all, he's he's commenting about some analysis that was done with the original project approval back in 2014. And yes, the city did make an assumption that the City Hall site would be accommodating a 75,000 square foot building. And that was embedded into the general plan traffic analysis. So we use those assumptions to establish a development limit. Otherwise, we couldn't even do a Charter 423 vote analysis. And that analysis was presented, we were very transparent about that analysis in 2014, and it did result in no vote electorally for the increased allocation to support the at that time a 99,000 square foot hotel. And the city council vetted that analysis, and it was approved. So we feel that's just really not an issue here this evening. And so, you know, the the increases since then are accounted for in the analysis.
That's all you have?
That's all I have.
Okay. Nothing on the other public comment about affordability?
Sure. What what I can say is that there are no affordable accommodations in the proposed addition. There are no affordable accommodations in the existing hotel. Mitigation for the accommodations for the higher call higher cost accommodations is provided through a city-run program for 10 years where we're housing underprivileged youths here in Newport's Beach and providing an overnight camp experience. And that was the mitigation that the Coastal Commission imposed upon the project. And so we anticipate an expansion of that program as a result of these five additional cottages. And that would be the mitigation for the affordable lower cost accommodations issue.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing and bring it up to the commission for any discussion or emotion.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended items. Ask the attorney, do I need to read each one? Or is that fine to make the motion as such?
Commissioner Wigan, just approving the recommended action is sufficient.
Yeah, I will do that.
I'll second.
Okay, we're going to do this the same way, right?
Yes, I will take a roll call vote now. Please respond when I call your name. Commissioner Wigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Elmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Klostermeyer?
Yes.
Secretary Rosin? And Chair Kleiman?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to our next item, item number four, Density Bonus Zoning Code and LCP Amendments. Have a staff presentation?
Certainly. Chair Kleiman, give us a moment here to change positions. And we've got got the presentation loaded up. So Principal Planner Jaime Maria will provide an overview of the proposed ordinances. In summary, the proposed ordinances are really to update our density bonus to make it consistent with state law. And and Mr. Maria will go ahead and provide the summary. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Kleiman, members of the commission, Jaime Maria, Principal Planner. As you mentioned, this is a code amendment to both our zoning code and LCP to bring our city's ordinances up to date with state law regarding density bonuses. Just a little bit of background, the density bonus law was first enacted in 1979. It's been updated several times over the years and last updated in 2021. Within our zoning code, the density bonus regulations are contained in Municipal Code Section 20.32. That was last updated in 2010. There's been 18 changes to state law since then. And so that's what's important to update our code, to bring it up to to date with state law. So as I mentioned, there's two amendments. One would be to the zoning code to update our density bonus regulations and to also establish a clear process for the review and approval of density bonuses. Currently, our regulations are a little ambiguous as far as the processing procedures. And with regards to our local coastal program, it currently doesn't include any density bonus regulations. So the amendment would include a brand new chapter. A just high level overview of what is density bonus. So it's really an incentive tool that would provide increased density above and beyond the typical maximum allowed development limits for a project in exchange for providing affordable or special needs housing. And so in this exhibit on the left, you can see what a typical 100% market rate project, you know, it is what it is. But if they're able to incorporate some level of affordable units, in this case, like 10% low income, through density bonus law, they would be eligible for an additional 20 market rate density bonus units, which are reflected in the orange shading. As you can see, that would increase the the bulk of the project. But beyond the additional density, density bonus laws is a whole package of incentives. So a project would be also eligible for reduced parking ratios, development incentives, and development standard waivers to help make the project both economically and physically feasible. And I'll get into each of those in a little bit more detail. But over the years, the number of eligible project types has increased. And so that's part of this amendment is to bring it up to date to include the additional project types. I'm not going to go into too much detail, but the three project types in green, those are your traditional affordable housing projects with very low, lower, moderate income housing incorporated. There's also special housing need project types that are eligible for density bonus, and that would include transitional foster youth, disabled veterans or homeless persons, college student housing, or senior citizen housing. Those are the project types shaded in that pink color. And then there's alternative options to achieve a density bonus, and that would include condominium conversions. That would include some level of affordable units, and then the donation of entitled land for affordable housing. And each has their own minimum requirement of affordable housing that would be provided. For the traditional housing type, the amount of bonus is based upon the number of affordable units they're providing. And so the deeper affordability levels, such as very low income, they're able to achieve a higher bonus with less units. And so that's reflected in the table on the left. So for example, with a project that provides only 15% very low income units, they're able to achieve a 50% density bonus, whereas compared with a moderate income project on the right table, they'd have to provide 44% of their units to achieve that same 50% density bonus. Our current code only allows a 35% bonus, and so this is one of the things that has to get updated. The other thing that changes state law is a project that has 100% affordable units, regardless of the income category, they'd be entitled to an 80% density bonus. State law also includes a newer provision that states for 100% affordable housing projects that are located within a half mile of a major transit stop, there's actually no density limit. They can provide as many units as they would like on that project. We currently do not have a qualifying major transit stop in the city, but it is something that we'll monitor over time, because that can change. For the other types of project types, the density bonus varies. So for those special needs housing types, the maximum bonus would be 35% for the college students or 20% for the those other categories. And then for the alternative project types, such as condo conversions or land donations, the bonus ranges from 15 to 25%. The ordinance does not allow for like stacking or the ability to combine different bonuses. So for example, if there was a senior citizen project, and then that also included very low income units, the applicant would have to choose one category for their density bonus. The only exception is for childcare. So any eligible project that includes a childcare facility would be entitled to a floor area bonus equal to the size of that childcare facility or an equivalent incentive. As I mentioned earlier, projects are entitled to an automatic parking reduction. Our typical parking standards for a multi-unit project is two and a half spaces per unit. But with a density bonus, depending on the number of bedrooms, they only have to provide one to one and a half spaces per unit if it's less than four bedrooms. And there's a couple other nuances in the code that allow further parking reductions or waiver in some specific cases. Density bonus projects, our applicant would be entitled to a number of incentives or concessions depending on the amount or proportion of affordable units provided within the project. And so an incentive or concession is intended to be regulatory relief that results in identifiable and actual cost reduction. So this is to help make the project more economically feasible. Examples of that are the ability to incorporate mixed zoning, if like a commercial component would help make the project more feasible. They can request deviations from development standards that would help reduce costs. So for example, if we had a design requirement that required a, you know, a more expensive architectural material, an applicant can request a waiver to use a different material type that would make the project less costly. And then they can also request reduction of fees or dedications. This is the one incentive where the city actually has discretion to grant it. And then in addition, a project can request development standard waivers. And so development standard waiver is they can request anything that would physically prevent the project from being constructed. So as you can see, in this case, a density bonus project would result in more units. In order to fit that project, the applicant can request for increased height. So in this example, you'd see our base height limit is 55 feet. In order to incorporate those density bonus units, the applicant can request an increased height limit to 70 feet. One thing to note is development standard waivers are unlimited. So developer or an applicant can request an unlimited number of waivers needed to accommodate that project. And so that could include setbacks, height limits, open space, any standard for to accommodate size. And this is something that's missing from our ordinance today. Then the ordinance would include a process for processing the density bonuses through an affordable housing implementation plan. This would be processed concurrently with any other required entitlements, such as site development review. The ordinance also clarifies the review authority. So the review authority would be the same as. So the review authority would be the same as underlying projects. So a smaller apartment project could be reviewed by the zoning administrator. A larger project would be reviewed by the planning commission. The only exception would be if the density bonus includes a request for a waiver or reduction of development standards, then the project would get kicked up to the planning commission level. And in the case that a density bonus request includes a financial incentive or a waiver of fees, that would then kick up the, a project to the city council level. And so staff's recommendation is that the planning commission conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolutions recommending that approval to the city council and adoption of zoning code amendment and submittal of the LCP amendment to the California Coastal Commission. I do want to note that there are four pending bills that are currently going through the legislature right now. We'll know by the end of summer if those bills pass, in which case staff will then work to revise the draft ordinances for city council review to include any needed updates. But that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Jaime. Always a very thorough presentation, certainly a lot to digest. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Wiegand?
Just, just to confirm, this is, everything that's in this ordinance is state-driven. This isn't something that somebody in the city or staff or anyone else has put to add. This is no more, no less, just what the state wants us to do, what we're forced, our hands are tied. There's not much more we can do, correct?
Correct. The only thing is, there's some minor clarifications and then the review process for the city on how to process an application.
Perfect.
And then, just on the special needs tabs that you had mentioned, I didn't see anything about workforce housing. Is that not considered that by the state, or is that, was that glanced over? What, what would kind of trigger workforce housing?
Well, I think workforce housing is kind of defined differently. Typically, I think workforce housing falls under that moderate income project, but you're right, this is mainly for ownership. So like, moderate income rental housing isn't covered by density bonus law currently.
Got it. Thank you.
Other commissioners?
Question?
Commissioner Elmore?
Just kind of a hypothetical question for you. So, I mean, the definition of density obviously means more. These buildings require resources from fire, from police, from school districts, from water supplies, et cetera. Just in this hypothetical situation, like, how does it work? And I don't know the answer. How does it work if, if it adds X amount of more bodies and those bodies need to go to a school district and that school district doesn't have availability for it? What, what is the protocol in those situations?
That's a good question. So generally, we still review the overall project impacts, so they are subject to CEQA. And, you know, if it's a larger project, you know, we'll go through the California Environmental Quality Act review. If there's an environmental impact report or mitigated negative declaration, we do analyze those impacts, and that does include impacts to local school districts. If it's a smaller project, that's exempt. It would just be the standard procedure to work with the school district and notify them of the project. So when the project's instructed, they do pay school fees. So there's school impact fee that is attributable to each new unit, so they would have to pay for that.
And are those fees, I mean, you're talking about the subsidies, about bringing down the fees for these guys. Are those, is that, in that situation, that hypothetical situation, is that a fee that would be reduced, or is that?
Well, it, it could be a fee that they requ, well, the school districts are separate from the city, so it's a separate agency. But if you use the example of like a traffic fee that is city-applied. So that, yeah, there's no, currently there's no discounts, but they could request a fee waiver through this density bonus process, and that would be something the city has discretion to offer or deny.
Okay, thank you.
I was just gonna add to that point that the developer is entitled to certain incentives and concessions. We have taken the position that reduction in fees is not an eligible mandated incentive or concession. So if the council in their discretion would like to reduce those, they may, but it's not something that we would consider a mandated incentive or concession.
So it would be considered by council and on an individual basis, is what you're saying?
For reduction of fees, that's correct.
Thank you. Secretary?
Just to piggyback onto that hypothetical thought process, if a project, as it stands alone prior to any density, doesn't trigger a general plan or zoning, a zone change, would it, with the density bonus, then, if it was allowed, then, would that then trigger it? Or is that a waiver? Is that, I, I hope I've phrased that correctly.
Yeah, I believe so. So if a project was below the threshold for a general plan amendment, the additional density bonus units cannot be considered, or cannot require a general plan amendment. So they're essentially exempt from a general plan.
That's not what I thought I was reading, so I just wanted to verify that. And then the other part of that was the hypothetical height limit. This, this is probably more of a CEQA question, but if it was a height limit within a public view corridor, what would happen in that situation? And it was impacting that view corridor?
Thank you. That's a good question, too. So as part of our, and I didn't get into too much detail, but with our LCP amendment, it closely monitor, or mimics the zoning code amendment. There is one exception, is that any requested waivers or deviations cannot be requested of any coastal resource protection policies of our LCP. And those are bluff development regulations, canyon development regulations, public view corridors or viewpoints, and then natural resource areas. So public views would be protected still, but, but only in the coastal zone.
Only in the coastal zone, okay. Thank you. Appreciate that, Jaime.
So that term that was used is, is the word balance. It's subjective, right? The, the balance between Coastal Commission and these density bonus laws?
Correct. So density bonus law doesn't supersede the Coastal Act. They're supposed to kind of work together. But anything that would impact a coastal resource can still be denied through that coastal development review process.
So outside of CEQA and Coastal Commission conflicts, these are by right? Applicant comes in, checks all the boxes?
We can deny the incentives or development standard waivers if we find that there's a specific adverse impact on the environment or public health, or if we find that they're contrary to law, or if they impact historic resource. So in those cases, we can deny these components of the request, but the burden's on the city and it's, it's more difficult.
To prove that those conditions are met, you mean?
Correct.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from commissioners for staff? Commissioner Klostermeier, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Oh, go, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are the parking bonuses triggered by any density bonus applied? And are they the same, or are they, you know, is there a ratio based on, you know, what level of density bonus you're applying for?
No, it's the same. So as soon as a project's eligible for density bonus, then they're automatically eligible for this reduction.
Regardless, I think, got it. The other one I saw later on, it was talking about city participation potentially, if there was an incentive or reduction in fees. It just seemed a little abstract. I don't know if that was just kind of a state thing and we're gonna figure it out, but how would that work on a future sale, it said, somehow?
Oh, in, in the ordinance?
Yeah, it's something to the effect of, almost like a partnership, and down the line, if it sold for fair market, they would essentially reimburse the city and?
Right. So for, like in the case of moderate income project, and they're providing condominiums that are affordable, we're required to enter into what's called an equity sharing agreement with the new buyer of that, that unit. And so in most cases, the affordability term is a minimum of 55 years. The exception is for these ownership units and this equity sharing agreement where that buyer of a condominium can choose to sell it after two years. But they have to share any equity gain in that project with the city. So whatever subsidy went into the providing that unit in the first place, so let's say the subsidy was 60%, the city would get 60% of the sale, plus any proportionate increase in equity if, if that property gained in value over time. The city is then responsible for taking that portion of the sale and then putting it back into affordable housing in the city within a five-year period.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments from the commission, we'll open it up for public comment.
Chair Kleiman, members of the commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. And I would certainly agree, there's no doubt that the current municipal code chapter about density bonuses is way out of date. However, I'm a little confused about what's being the massive amendment that's being presented to you tonight. The reason I'm a little confused about it, kind of expanding on Commissioner Wiegand's initial question. When the city council requested or initiated this amendment back in April of 2020, the staff report accompanying that stated that a city can be more generous with density bonuses and incentives and so forth, but cannot be less generous than the state law. And the state law is constantly changing, so even with this, it's likely to be out of date a year from now, or even by September. A simple solution suggested in that staff report two years ago was to simply remove the chapter or reduce the chapter to, to an explanation of our process for reviewing the requests and say that we defer to state law as to the mechanics or what is allowed of the density bonus. Simply implement the process part, defer to state law. But I see here, without a clear explanation, that we're not doing what was proposed when it was initiated. We're choosing the other route of trying to totally duplicate or spell out what the state law allows, and we hear we're not adding anything to it. So I'm wondering why we're doing that if we're not being more generous. And then the second point, I'm a little confused why we are proposing to add a chapter about density bonuses to our coastal plan. On hundred and page nine, it points out that the density bonus law, quote, "does not supersede or in any way alter, lessen the effect of the application of the California Coastal Act." You may recall, a few meetings back, you reviewed some legislation called SB 9 allowing multiple houses to be built on residential R1 lots. It had, I think, the identical clause in it, and the interpretation at that time was that you could not do any of that SB 9 stuff in the coastal zone because our LCP didn't address it. And yet here, we're saying that even though that same clause is in this one, it does apply, and then somehow we have to duplicate all the state law. So I'm, I'm not understanding, number one, why we're doing this if we're not being more generous, and number two, why are we mending the coastal plan? Why that interpretation is different for density bonus than it was for SB 9? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Seeing no one else to comment on this item, we'll go ahead and let staff respond if you choose.
Yes, with regard to the first comment about, you know, instead of deferring to state law and why did we include the provisions of state law in, in our code? We did consider it, but trying to digest state law and break it down is extremely difficult, and both for staff and then also for the members of the public or developers who are proposing a project. And so it's our opinion that it was better to create a codes section that's easier to understand, provides clarification, and more certainty for developers. With regards to the question about the Coastal Act, density bonus law is a little different in that it does clarify that the provisions of the density bonus are eligible within the coastal zone, but it doesn't supersede the Coastal Act. And so there is a requirement that we have to develop a code that's in harmony with our coastal provisions.
Thank you for the explanation. With that, I will close the public hearing and bring it up to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Wiegand?
I just have one more question. You had, on your slide, had four legislative actions that were gonna be coming up in the legislature as they finish up on August 31st. Is this gonna kind of be like the ADU issue that we were dealing with, where like every year, there's gonna be a slew of these bills that staff's gonna have to continually be updating? Or is this a little less than the ADU?
Unfortunately, I think, I think it's similar. The state's continually tinkering with the density bonus law and creating new eligible project types and other exceptions. So I think it's something that we just gotta continue to tinker with. But this is a major overhaul, because, you know, we've delayed this for quite some time. In the future, they should be more minor cleanup amendments.
Thank you. Sorry to you in advance for having to do all that work.
Commissioner Elmore?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve density bonus zoning code and LCP amendment, PA 2020-032.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We'll call for roll call vote?
Yes. Commissioner Wiegand?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
A non-enthusiastic yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Elmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Klostermeier?
Yes.
Secretary Rosin?
Yes.
And Chair Kleiman?
Yes.
Okay. The motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to the next item, staff and commissioner items, item number five, motion for reconsideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number six, report by the community development director or request for matters which a planning commissioner would like to place on a future agenda.
Hi, Chair Kleiman, I'll go ahead and do the director's report. I'll try to be brief here. So we have the housing element that's under review by State Department of Housing and Community Development. We feel, and after discussions with them, we feel optimistic, we're gonna be able to make some final changes here and get this adopted, you know, we say within the next month or two in advance of October 15th. And that should allow us a 36-month timeline to implement the rezones programs that are part of the housing element. So we feel fairly optimistic, as I said here today, that we're gonna be able to do that. So more to come on that. Let's see, the Gannon residence, you saw that at your last meeting. That was that project that, on, on, on Bay Island. So that was appealed to the city council. We'll have a hearing planned, they're scheduled in late August. The two neighbors are kind of working out maybe some differences, and maybe that will get resolved, but a neighbor appealed that project, just wanted to let you know. Looking forward to our agendas, we don't have any items in August, so you have the entire month of August off. So our next meeting will be September 8th. We do have four items on that agenda, and one of those will be the circulation element. So that went through an extensive process for an update for the policies. As we're finishing the formatting and creating new exhibits for, for it, you've already seen this last year, but we're bringing it forward. We want to get it to the city council shortly, and, and so you'll see that in, in September 8th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Such a tremendous effort on staff's part. Meet that timing, so thank you. Are there any items that commissioners would like to request on a future addenda? Hearing none, I'll open it up to the public if anyone wants to comment on these items. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven, requests for excused absences. Are there any requests from commissioners? Seeing none, we are adjourned.